It's Tuesday night, actually. All day yesterday, all day today, tomorrow, and then Saturday. So just for the listening audience, we'll be at our design studio on the Nelskot Strip all day tomorrow from eight o'clock to five o'clock. Lawrence will be drawing. I'll be receiving further comments from community members. And then at eight-thirty in the morning on Saturday, we have a Spanish-language focus group at La Roca Restaurant, kindly hosted by the owner, Hilario. And then also from ten thirty to one through thirty, we'll be on the Scott Plaza, revealing what we've learned to date. So we're about halfway through this week. Next, then, we go back and test the alternatives, and then move to what everyone wants to know, which is, when will it be built and who will pay for it? So they're looking at a financing and implementation strategy and wrapping up in the spring and mid-year 2016. So there's the aerial view. Lawrence will go into the site and its attributes in just a little bit, but obviously, an opportunity there to connect both sides of the highway. As you all know, the project area includes both area within the city limits, which are shown on the zoning mapping color, as well as the area within the red lines there. All those white areas are in the city's urban growth boundary, but currently not annexed to the city yet. So we worked with the project advisory committee members on a future vision statement. So you can read it there on the screen, but the idea is that we're developing, building out over time, both sides of the highway in a neighborhood that's well-connected. The primary values: economically vibrant and attractive, welcoming from a tourist perspective, as well as for year-round residents, and development honors the natural assets of the area, which are significant, and builds off them to create value for property owners and tenants. Residents enjoy lifelong learning. At the Oregon Coast Community College and Lincoln County Public Schools, students are able to walk, drive, bike, and take transit or drive safely to the campuses. And these are now a sequence of the goals that are guiding our work. So if you have any exception to these, we would really appreciate hearing from you. The first is livability in housing. So this, we're hearing this over and over, so powerful that what you're about to see from Lawrence focuses on a range of housing design types. So we're really, you know, there's transportation challenges and topographical challenges, but what seems to be really needed in Lincoln City is a range of affordable housing types for employees and families who'd like to start homeownership here in Lincoln City. We've also heard about recreation and health, very high value, obviously, in Lincoln City, being walking and biking, looking, we're looking to connect the, who's head to Bay Trail? Head to Bay Trail? I just want to say hood to bay, head to Bay Trail. So we've been looking, Lawrence will talk to you about where we're looking to cross 101 with that. But folks have been dropping into the studio all day today, talking about walking and biking. It is just so, people are so interested how to move through the study area and connect, very interested in off-road and off-101 paths. We love 101, but we know we need some alternatives. In our vision and goal statement, we want to recognize the tribal heritage of the Lincoln County community, as well as the diversity of all cultures. We want to focus on employment opportunities. Lawrence will be showing you just a taste of some design types to recognize that needs to be, continue to be present in our study area. And transportation choice, can't be overstated here, but the opportunity for safe crossings, transit, walking, biking, as well as, of course, driving. Lifelong learning, we want to recognize the assets of the Oregon Coast Community College and the high school campuses within the study area, and make sure that they're well-connected to and through future neighborhoods. Again, I mentioned that ecology and natural resources. There's Baldi Creek, the geologic hazards, wetlands, a threat of some earthquake and tsunami risk. Going to be mindful of all these natural assets as we plan. I mentioned a little bit of the schedule. I'll just leave it up there as I transition over to my colleague, Lawrence Kamar, who can walk you through his show. Are there any questions or comments on the process today? If not, I'll introduce Lawrence.
Thank you. It's nice to be here again. I've seen many, many familiar faces, having worked here in Lincoln City through the years. And we've loved it the last couple of days, being here. Opening up our next presentation. I am Lawrence Kamar. I think I mentioned it earlier when we were going around, but Lawrence Kamar, Architecture and Town Planning. And advancing this is done with...
We're here.
On the arrow, the up and down, okay. Very good. On the study area, you usually don't look at it from this particular vantage point, but you can see, of course, Highway 101, Nelskot Strip in the bottom center, and the hills rising up above, the spyglass ridge down to the south, to the east, southeast over to the right, Agnes Creek, Greenway, you can see up to the northwest. And way in the distance, you can also see the lake. And even though that is far beyond our study area, we have it in mind as something that is on this side of the highway. But what a great opportunity to build a new neighborhood, or neighborhoods, that are places for people to live and work and shop and play, right up along the edge of the highway, here, pretty much in the core of your city, of Lincoln City, along this corridor. The highway, it always comes into discussions whenever we're, you know, speaking about Lincoln City and how this place comes together. This is a little old diagram showing a couple of main themes here. The five-minute and the 10-minute walk, those two radiuses, the circles, the first one from the new 100% corner that you have at that signalized intersection that ODOT has recently put in. And it's still not even functioning yet, but it will any day, I hear. Considering that as a center, clearly, the Nelskot Strip is a center, one of the many villages along the line of 101. Taking that as a dimension of a five-minute walk, you can see how far you can come up within a quarter-mile, and then a half a mile. And we look at this dimension because it's key to thinking in terms of how people live in their neighborhood, in their community. If one can walk to a place from their home where they might work, or shop, or go to school, or play at a playground, or at a park, we generally believe and understand through research and observation that people will walk five minutes, quarter-mile, maybe as much as 10 minutes. If it is a safe walk, a convenient walk, convenience has to do with the shortness, safety has to do with, is it, are you going to get hit by a car, or do you have safe crossings? And if it is an attractive, and interesting, and entertaining, and engaging walk. And that last one is the one I really love. The first two, you figure we can make it a safe place, we can make it short enough, put things close enough together so that people can live and work and shop together. But finally making it a really attractive and interesting place is what really wakes me up every day in the morning, to work on these kinds of things. You can see the study area in the dark black line. The bright fuchsia color is indicating the slopes. So we have gone into analysis drawings of the slope conditions. Once we blow this up and have the topography really clearly shown, we can very carefully place roads and identify where neighborhoods can be placed on those hilltops, or down, closer to the road, the main road, where the steeper slopes are not occurring. This particular map, I think, is showing 20 to 30% slopes, very steep. You can't drive a road straight up one of those, but you can manage to go along the edge of a contour line like that. So it just begins to help us understand the lay of the land. This is the aerial photograph. That is coming off just looking kind of dark in the midst. That's because there's a heck of a lot of trees up there. It's very thick, thick forest, probably second, third growth, so it's not, in some places, it's not fully penetrable. But there is spyglass ridge that you can see down to the south, that really, we understand, has some fantastic views, looking out to the ocean. Down on the southern reaches, the bright yellow is an indication of the tsunami hazard zone, the flood zones, that we are believed to occur, would occur, under certain circumstances. And you can see, unfortunately, it could reach a certain way up into the Nelskot neighborhood, but all of this land that we're looking at in the Nelskot Gap area, up in the higher lands and on the east side of, most along the east side of the highway, are going to be well above that flood stage. So it'll be a place to go to for safety in those kinds of events. You also can see some blue lines that are indicating the current existing streams and drainages.
Lawrence?
Yeah?
Could you go back one?
Mm-hmm.
That in the center, lower center, that gray empty area with no trees, is that a valley, or is that a clear cut?
That's outside of the study area, but I'm pretty sure that is a high ground of a clear, that is clear cut?
It's a clear cut.
Yeah. Yeah, and you can see the truck, clear-cut roads that are cutting through that. This map is one of our guiding maps, another analysis map of the topography, again, a grade map. The bright fusion, this is 30% and above. The lighter yellow is 20% and below. So generally, where you see the yellow is, roads can be built, neighborhoods can easily be built. If you've got a great view, I know developers will use even those steepest slopes to manage to get houses that can get that view and live on those tighter slopes. You see them right in Nelskot, and various places throughout Lincoln City, where the view is great, they'll build on those. But for the most part, for laying out some roads, we want to keep them in these yellow areas. Now, there is a, there are some very preliminary new proposed roads that you're seeing on this map. Without going up, I can walk up, this thing moves. These are the existing roads outside of the study area. And we have, we are looking at this whole network running up through. This is not all of the roads that would occur in new neighborhoods here, but it is, for the most part, a sort of a key, what we want to call a neighborhood connector road, or series of roads, that would meander up and down and through those hills. There's a fair amount of topography to get up through these, cross a couple of streams, get around a drainage here, and then come back down into the, into the rock quarry, sand and gravel area, and then rise back up further, perhaps, and connect to Lee Street up in here. This is the whole panhandle, I like to call it, that in particular has the industrial zoning in the eastern edge of it, along with the sand and gravel. So starting to see that the lay of this land lends itself, by its current uses, more to employment and industry back in this panhandle, and perhaps more to the more mixed-use residential with commercial, with perhaps future schools, parks, neighborhood in other words, down in this triangle. It's closer into the existing Nelskot, it's close up to the access off of the highway, and this lends itself more to a, a little bit more of a remote, more intensive industrial and business, perhaps. There's another concept here, though, back to that road, making its way up to Lee, is intriguing, because it's a parallel road to the highway. And the idea of accessing neighborhoods without always having to go back and forth off, on and off of the highway, has really resonated with people here. You know, you're living in a, in a city that always seems to bring you back to that highway, and it gets clogged up. It's not always the best way to get around. We know that for sure, because there are great roads, like coast, that make its way up and meandering through from Nelskot to the next neighborhood, and the next neighborhood north of that. I know that when Olivia Beach was built, there was a major connection point that was added on there, that previously was much more circuitous getting around. Those kinds of local neighborhood connections that are, again, I want to emphasize, meandering, slow-moving, should have sidewalks on them. Unfortunately, the ones back here don't have sidewalks, so your, people are walking or biking in the street. Any new streets in here should certainly have sidewalks, and I would even say, separate it from the curb with a planting strip, so that they really feel like they're safe places. You might be noticing some roads out here, and this is outside the UGB, and of course, then the annexed portion. This is a hillside that previous, that in some years past had been clear cut. We are even asking the question, could a new road make its way all the way up to, there's a power line easement here, or to, I'm forgetting the names of these roads up here, but I think you all might know where they are. These in particular make their way out to East Devils Lake Road, not very far. So you could go all the way from Soletz Bay, driving on these little back roads through the neighborhoods, slow and easy, and make your way up all the way through, and all the way to the east of, east of Devils Lake Road. And for that matter, no, you'd be bypassing. Now, I want to use that, I don't want to use that word too strongly, bypass, because we know that we don't want a big bypass. We, again, we want to emphasize local and slow-moving. Yeah?
So the roads, the ones that you were just talking about, the two parallel roads that go nowhere?
Here?
Those aren't part of your planning, right?
It's outside the planning study area, yes. We are, we are looking out above and beyond, and, you know, outside of this project, but putting recommendations forth. What could be very interesting, though, is if it all could be done without having to even do that, and perhaps just go up Lee. And even today, our engineer and planner, Rich Catlin from Recent Associates, came up with a really bright, new way of possibly even getting up through here somewhere and making it into one of these streets, and just skirting this big property, not necessarily having to go through this. But of course, we need to speak to these property owners. I believe this is a water tank area, a water tank lot that is owned by the city. Haven't gone up there to see if it's possible to put a road around the water tank or not. But we want to put forth these as various options and ideas about how, about this concept that you could flow out of these neighborhoods and find your way as a local to East Devils Lake Road, and out the other way, and down to the bay.
Lawrence?
Yes?
Up north, up southeast 23rd, to the industrial area back there.
Right here?
Yes. Any idea what it would take to get three-phase power back there?
No, I don't. Probably our civil engineer, Rich Catlin, who isn't with us at now, he's back in his office, we could ask that question of, to bring free face.
There is some machine shops back there, it's a little bit of light industry back there. And from what I understand, the power is very dirty, because that's the end of the line. They spend a lot of money buying fuses and transformers.
Hmm.
In addition to not having three-phase power.
Thank you.
Good, yeah. And we understand they also are on septic and well water. So other benefits that could come from being brought into the city is to hook up to that, to those larger systems.
Well, no, I'm not suggesting they be brought into the city, I'm suggesting that somehow we get three-phase power up there.
Okay. All right. We'll look at that. Thank you. Now, I want to back out from the big picture of the mapping of the area and the landform, and how we work within that, and just look at these, at the various housing types that have been considered, and that are varying in price points, sizes, and all sorts of, you know, variety of housing. So that's one of the important points, is that this isn't a matter of building a lot of the same single-family houses, as you often see in new suburban-type style development, but that variety of housing and choice is what makes up a good, interesting neighborhood. Again, one you want to walk through, and one that has diversity, that affords different price ranges for people. Did the microphone just go off?
We're still hearing it. Still, I'm hearing it, we're still...
Hear me? Okay. This is the original, you've probably seen this old photo, it's the original settlement of Mr. Nelskot, over half a century or more ago. And I just love this photo, because it has all of the components of what we're talking about here. Mixed use, mixed income, it was just a sort of, you know, little encampment, it wasn't a full-blown neighborhood, I don't believe, at this point, but it had large cottages and small cottages, and a retail store in the front that was designed to look like a boat that was in the middle of the stream down there, a little public green with picnic benches, and a community building right in the center. This is, and then, you know, larger houses at the top. That's the kind of ideas of mixing that happens in a neighborhood, not one-size-fits-all. We do a lot of research into the history of a town, of a region, of a large region. These are various pictures we've, that I've found through the years, of old turn-of-the-century main streets and towns. You can see that, you know, the idea of a mixed-use store, with a ground floor retail, apartments up above, or maybe it's an office up above. You know, it was a long-term, it's been around a long time. Down on the bottom there, there's a big festival of people in front of a little chapel, and a couple of houses mixed in, and a main street. In those days, they didn't pave the main streets yet, but they knew how to make a main street right from the start. They came out of the, you know, from the east, and they came, and they said, this is where the street is, and we're going to line these buildings up, and they're going to have beautiful cornices and beautiful storefronts on the, on the ground floor. And they had small, little tiny cottages that were very affordable, they had bigger houses that were a little more upscale, and they even had apartments and, you know, The beach, the edge of this neighborhood is something, of course, we're not going to forget about, as being one of the reasons that we're, that many of us are here. You know, that much of this city has come to be here. Beautiful historical photo, or the, you know, the blue skies of today. The edge, this is the edge of the city, it's the edge of the neighborhood, and it's the edge of the whole continent. So people love to come here. But the other edges of this, of this study area, of these future neighborhoods, are the woods themselves, the beautiful babbling creeks coming down out of those. And so preservation of both the beach and orientation and connection to the beach, and connection up into the Highlands, has been really key issues that have come up. And that whole head-to-bay trail, we had a fantastic discussion with Ian from the City Today, who is working on that whole connectivity, and we found, we think, a key way, a wonderful way to make your way through from those two pieces of open space. So that idea of coming from the edge of a neighborhood to the center of a neighborhood, we have a name for, both in ecological studies, but also in urban studies. We call it the transect. It simply means to take a section from, in this, the beach is a beautiful way of giving an example of a section, from the water to the sand, to the sand dunes, to the Highlands, to way up into the Highlands up above, that you get different kinds of plants and animals that live in each one of those different ecozones. Same thing happens in the human habitat, that we might live in the core of the neighborhood down here, or in this illustration. And as we go further out into the farmland, or into the forest land, or out to the edge of the ocean, it, well, actually, the edge of the ocean often becomes more and more dense. But up into the hills and the farmland, it becomes a little less dense. Same thing you see going out here to the orchards in the distance, or main street in the middle of the neighborhood. And what's important is that this is not a big distance you go. This is really meant to be, again, that five-to-10-minute walk, that you can access nature and cultural activity and vibrance right in the middle of your, of your neighborhood, all within that five-minute, quarter-mile to half-mile walk. These are the different kinds of, kinds of housing and buildings, and mix of buildings that you might find, from civic buildings and apartment buildings, and large, larger, could be actually, office buildings, or industrial buildings at the top, or mixed with that churches and, and different kinds of community buildings, to the main street, mixed use, to row houses and townhouses and duplexes, to larger, general houses, and then tiny little cottages are another very important affordable housing type, that we want to keep reinvigorating and bringing back. And you find throughout Lincoln City quite often, that those little tiny cottages and cottage clusters. Let's look now at the Nelskot Strip itself. This actually has tremendous opportunity here, and the work that's been done to improve the edge of this little slip lane, this little strip, really is going to bring it into a whole new generation of opportunity. We love this notion of the slip lane, because it gives these retailers and these commercial businesses immediate highway frontage and on-street parking. It's not right on the highway, but it's just that little slip lane away. And it's a little bit of protection from the high-speed traffic of the highway, with the trucks going by, and the higher speed, and it gives you this quiet little, like Eddie on the side of a, of a stream. Now the di, you can tell this is an old photo, because it's parallel, now it's diagonal parking, you're getting more parking in there. So it's, it's working very well, and we think we can build on this, the seed of this idea here, in other parts of the Gap neighborhoods. This is what it's looking like now. It's going to be growing up a little bit more, hopefully, the grass, but you get that protected little, little offshoot. And let's see what happens in future years to these buildings and the property owners. Do they feel that they have more opportunity here now, that it's more of an established little strip with their on-street parking? Maybe there's going to be some opportunities for rebuilding or additions, going up another story or two, getting residential up above, might get some views of the ocean. We understand that there's, there are residences underneath most of those businesses, and that people have lived there in the past, and hopefully, will be living up and, up above and down below those shops again, in the near future. It's not, it's not very much different from what we call a boulevard. Boulevards such as Willamette Falls Drive and West Lynn, this is a beautiful little boulevard. It's a main street that has a couple lanes in the middle, and on-street parking even on those couple of lanes, and then it has these planting strips again, much like Nelskot Strip. And you can, can you tell that the planting strip is in here? So these are some parallel parked cars, and then you're seeing off in the distance, diagonal parked cars. It's because there's a similar slip lane at the Willamette Falls Drive. This is a boulevard with frontage lanes, and you'll find it on Shattuck Boulevard in Berkeley, you'll find them in Washington DC, in Boston, and in Paris, France. It's a, it's a wonderful type of street that provides free traffic, and then also retail frontage, and even mixed use with people living facing out to that. And you get that little bit of a distance away from the high-speed traffic, and it's quieter, and it's much more pleasant, and it also has a lot of retail vitality as a result of the parking. So I want to show you where we're adding that concept of the boulevard frontage lane into the plan here now. So here we have the slip lane down at, at Nelskot. There's this whole frontage running along here from, I have to get, this is 23rd Street, so we're down a little bit from there. And we're starting to look at these key locations for connecting in, perpendicular. And we have this idea that I talked about before, of the parallel street up in the hills, the neighborhood connector. This, we're showing as a concept of a boulevard frontage lane, on the other side, on the east side of Baldi Creek. Baldi Creek right now is looking kind of like a ditch on the side of the highway, unfortunately, but it's a real creek. And it, it has the potential of, once again, becoming a quite beautiful and restored natural waterway. But there are also chart, there's also Charter Communications, two other businesses, the names are escaping me at the moment, and they are set back at a certain distance from the edge of the drainage into Baldi Creek. In particular, in front of Charter, there is a paved concrete sidewalk that I believe was requested or required by the city for Charter to put in, when they, when they built up their, their building. When we saw that, and the beautiful trees that are overhanging the stream, we realized this is an opportunity, again, to create one of these slip lanes, one of this, this kind of a boulevard. Instead of it being a thin little, you know, five-to-six-foot sandy strip with grasses in it, it's the entire drainage of Baldi Creek, in between the highway and there. We walked that today with two ODOT officials, with our engineer, with our friend from, from Paris, France, and she was able to talk about the boulevards that are there in Paris. And we came to see that this, this could really be a wonderful opportunity to create this kind of a one-way lane, with a little bit of a parking on that lane, separated from the busyness of the highway, and having retail frontage facing to the highway, though. It could be businesses, it could be residences, could be, you know, a combination of those things. Well, I should have been showing this picture. There is one of the buildings, and you can see the drainage, and you can see the edge. And imagine being up on that, that lane.
Can you give the councilors and commissioners comments just on that concept real quick before we go on? We're about to shift into housing types, but we've heard a lot of support for this concept. We just want to make sure you're okay while they're continuing to advance, and if you have questions or not.
For the people at home, Christian was just asking if we could have some comments and just open the discussion a little bit before we move into different housing types about this idea of, of the boulevard frontage lane that we're speaking of on the other side of Baldi Creek.
At one time, when we first went back to, I think...
No, I think they're all right.
When we first started talking about expanding the highway there, and turning, you know, turning it into a, a turn lane, whatever, that was one of the concepts, was to put the sidewalk and other things on the other side of Baldi Creek. And a couple of people did mention having a lane of traffic, you know, wide enough that traffic and/or bicycles and... traffic and/or bicycles and whatever could be over on that side. And I think it's a very good idea. We have quite a bit of vacant land there and getting people off the highway to do whatever they want to do, I think is a very good concept. I personally like it very well.
I agree. It's a great idea.
It also maintains character of the Nell Scott community.
Right.
The original slip lane in the historic district and not creating a new one along or by one would be terrific.
That's building off of something, a seed that's right here.
I like the idea, but when I left the studio yesterday, I looked specifically at the Charter building and it's very close. It would be very cramped in that one area.
Go back Lawrence if you don't mind. So it's right here and actually Lawrence and our team were walking along this a few weeks back. And it is surprisingly, when you're on that site, it might be worth asking their permission someday to walk it. It is surprisingly wide, so it might be worth actually walking it sometime. And we can get you the dimensions, but it is narrow, it's tight, but it's deceivingly wide there.
That looks like it's the building that's at the growth gates area there, but the Charter is beyond that.
Yep, yep.
It's closer to the creek than that building is there.
I should send Deborah an image of, I actually was photographing Deborah and Lawrence walking that when we were out on the site a few weeks back. And it is surprisingly expensive. You're right, it's tight, but it is, I was surprised myself.
Yeah, the dimensions we're speaking of are an eight to 10-foot sidewalk, so the building face, an eight to 10-foot sidewalk, a seven to eight-foot single parallel parking lane, and then probably 12-foot maximum of a driving lane. And then going into the natural edge where there are trees right now, not needing a sidewalk on the other side, although there could be just a soft trail on that other side, and then dropping down into the creek. If it is too tight, I have to admit, we didn't go out there with a tape measure exactly. If it's too tight there, what we could do is in front of Charter itself specifically, which I think is the closest building to the creek, we could say, well, we don't put the on-street parking lane perhaps, just in that one. Get beyond that, though. Now, there also is chain link fences that Charter has out in front of their concrete face building. You know, it would be up to them as to when they would want to do this. But to allow the drive-through so you could get to the next business, that could set back a few more feet and allow that. We feel it could all be put together over time.
And Lawrence, do you imagine the retail being on the east side of that road or on the west side of that road?
On the east side of that road. So it's, boy, I have a section that I've drawn in the studio and we'll get it up here in our next presentation on Saturday. It would be the highway, the Baldy Creek, a little bit of extra land with a soft path and the trees, then the lane, then the driving lane, then the parking lane, then the sidewalk, and then the retail building to the east of all that.
Thank you.
Did you have a comment here?
We're talking about one lane of traffic that would be northbound.
Northbound, yeah. And then connecting in at key points with either right-in, right-out intersections or in a couple of places, probably one place, signalized intersection. And then you have the left-hand turnpocket, so not only right-in, right-out, but you could go left into some of those and circle back in.
Councilor, what did you have?
Yeah, I was wondering, what part does the speed zone play in the viability of these businesses? It seems to me that, you know, you don't go shopping when you're on a 70 mile an hour freeway. And that's the principle. And as you back off, at what point is the tipping point where you're able to pull over? Do we know that?
The desired speed.
The desired speed. Well, certainly, well, shouldn't be going 70, that would be.
Well, no, but I was just saying, you know, the only thing you're going to do is pull into a service station and you got these long ramps. The faster you go, the more, the more harder, the harder it is to pull in and do your shopping, that type of thing. In fact, you don't even see it, everything's a blur and you're going at light speed down those roads. I'm just, you know, if you build it and you can't turn there, then what good is it?
Let's keep as a question to identify what the potential could be.
Okay, yeah. We'll give that some thought.
And I had two questions. Baldy Creek, now on the proposed industrial zone, we already kind of almost have light industry in that area. Have we tested Baldy Creek for what's in there? Generally, when you have an industrial area, you're going to have pollutants and toxins. And I would be very surprised if there weren't pollutants and toxins in Baldy Creek at this time.
Thanks. I'll look into that. One of the things we're doing through this week is updating the existing conditions report. We produced a draft, but I'll be sure to look into that with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and look at the context. Also talk to Ian about what the water quality is in that. Lila, thank you, in that facility.
I don't know when was the last time it was tested.
Right, right. Certainly, any urban stream could have those challenges. I think Mr. Griffiths and then Mr. Ryan.
I don't know when the last time the water quality was tested. I do know that when they were getting ready to put the new culvert, much larger culvert in there, they shocked the stream and it was amazing how many different varieties of smaller fish were in there. I would have suspected that they would find maybe two tadpoles and a newt, but they had quite a variety of small fish that they found, including some bull trout, which I think was bull trout, one of the kind of trout species, which means that they've been traveling through that culvert at the gravel yard all the way back up to the regular Baldy Creek, which is pretty freaking amazing. So I think that there probably is some pollutant. I know ODF and W did quite a bit of extensive work. I don't know, I never saw that part of the report, just how many fish that they've.
Why do they shock it? Why did they shock them?
Because whenever they work on a stream, they have to shock it to take out any fish that are there. Because, you know, I don't know why, it's part of their rules.
So they aren't.
In relation to want to call, they don't chill. What borders the industrial area to the north? Is it an open space, well, I'm sorry?
You mean north of the industrial?
Yeah.
I think it is. It's a combination.
I have a map of.
Oh, there you go.
What do you mean? You mean West Lynn?
That's correct.
Forest.
It's a commercial forest.
A commercial forest.
Maybe we should probably move on to the housing case, but so if it's all right with you, it sounds like, I mean, it sounds like it's acceptable to continue to carry forth this concept, but look at the diameters and speed control and also the water quality and environmental impact. So thanks, okay. And we'll stay tuned and certainly any other feedback or guidance or questions, please, if you would, communicate that to Deborah and she'll share it with us immediately. Please, Lawrence.
A range of employment and work types. We want to make sure that we're remembering this has industrial land in it and that there's a need for jobs in this town. And this is not, this town is not all about tourism. It's about actually people living here and carrying on a livelihood and what opportunities are there in the future, small, medium, and large in terms of employment opportunities. These are just a couple of images to bring those thoughts to mind when we're going to pursue this further as the process goes on. You know, to the right here is this simple metal shed building. To the left is an older-looking office, you know, brick office building. There's also very small incremental ways, bottom-up as well as top-down ways for people to find employment and to be entrepreneurs. And if there's any ways that we can provide opportunities, particularly in the industrial zone, but mixed into the neighborhoods as well, is key, that people could open up a shop, could open up a small business right in the neighborhood, that the neighborhoods are not just residential places, that they are mixed use, that each neighborhood within that five-minute walk, you can walk to a shop of some kind. And that things are being made, you know, in our community. And that could be a craftsman making something small like, you know, shoes or a bricklayer, let's say. We could have brick buildings again someday. Maybe that's not the right source, right for this local area, but variety is the point I'm making here. Also a range of housing and live-work types. So that idea of small incubator mom-and-pop shops in the home sometimes or just down the street in the neighborhood center. You can read the goal that we have here of families and people of all ages of being able to find attractive, affordable housing as well as comfortable, mixed-use communities in this beautiful, natural city of Nell Scott. That's, again, close to the forest and the ocean and that are walkable, interesting, attractive, well-planned and maintained. So that idea of different kinds of housing along that transect that I spoke of, from the natural edge to the lively center of the neighborhood or of the town, these are just a little survey of different kinds of housing from on the right-hand side, the more urban, the more center-oriented with shops, ground-floor retail, sometimes apartments above, to townhouses in the middle, to smaller lot houses that are tight together, to the larger houses that are a little bit more luxurious, perhaps overlooking the ocean, off the edge of a bluff. That daily needs are within that walking distance, that there is, it's how critical it is when you have a shop that you have on-street parking that is easily visible and accessible. That sidewalk café seating can spill out onto the street and make those lively places that attract more people. That pedestrian scale signage is meaning that it's small signage. It's not the highway scale signage that's drawing people off of the main road. It's that there's a place, there's a community, there's a Main Street, there's a slip lane like Nell Scott is. You don't need big signs if you have a place that people are attracted to. And that streets are lively gathering places in the heart of the neighborhood. Not every street's going to be filled with people if it's a smaller residential street, but that in the core of the town and the neighborhood, we design streets and we design houses so that they really activate the street space, that the street is actually a public space, not something just for driving through. You know, this is just a little festival in the upper-left-hand corner in the street up in one of the projects that I've, one of the neighborhoods I've designed. And it's the fact of the porch being a full eight feet deep that makes it such an attractive place to spill off of and come into the street or the café in the middle of the town. Different kinds of housing can achieve really significant housing densities, but that fit into the neighborhood very compatibly. 14 dwelling units an acre at a higher level is perfectly high. You know, you could, you can go much higher than that with tall apartment buildings, but that's not what's needed in this kind of a neighborhood. You can reach 14 or 10 or eight dwelling units per acre with these kinds of houses, either small lots, single-family, very tightly put-together cottages, or duplexes, or small apartment buildings that are the scale and the size of just a large house. Again, mixing residences and shops below. On the right-hand side, I love this street in Portland, they were all once houses, but it was a relatively busy street in the middle of a neighborhood and they applied the ability to be able to do commercial zoning on the ground floor of those. And a lot of, all of those houses transformed. But they have a choice. People don't have to make it a shop. They can still just use it as their house or they can open up a shop or business on the ground floor.
So when you look at Nell Scott, you have neighborhoods that really do look a little bit like that. And looking at, for example, shops, restaurants are the number-one frequent in shops. More restaurants in an area, the more viable that area is. And my question is, is so we zone these so we can, these cute little houses, so we can zone them commercial, yet by the time you make ADA requirements, which will eat up all of your bathrooms and, you know, safety, you know, fire standards, there's no room left for the restaurant. And so what are other?
How do you convert?
Yeah, how do you do that?
Conversions, you're right, conversions are not quite as easy to accomplish in any kind of a house than if you're actually designing it from the start to be, to have the fire separations, to look like a house more like on the left-hand side, to function like a house on the upstairs. The left-hand side here is a kind of residential-looking building that I don't think was renovated into a shop on the ground floor, but started from the beginning. These on the right, you know, I have to be honest, I don't know exactly what the logistics of how those transformed. They may have been able to go through, maybe it was before ADA, because I'm even seeing big stairs rising to the top on that one.
Before ADA, correct. So ADA has been on the list since '64.
Has it been that far?
So maybe these houses predate.
The houses predate that. When they transform, transferred, I don't know.
We've got a wonderful community college. And then we've got a culinary center that can be a training ground. And you've got students that would love to be entrepreneurs and have their own place. And then we've got all these stores or houses that are just perfect for it, like go to Washington DC, every house is a restaurant. But then all of a sudden you get to the very end and wah-wah. Yeah, they're against parking ADA and huge gaps and.
So lowering the barriers to entry level entrepreneurs, maybe is the objective here. And maybe it's not necessarily renovating a house if there are too many hurdles to be made. Maybe there are other ways that we can determine how to achieve a small, little restaurant.
Yeah, I mean, those chefs are at their creative peak and they're financially low, both to guess.
Did I misread, say there's a culinary school here?
Yes, we do. We have a culinary center.
Excellent.
And it's state-of-the-art. And our community college is wonderful. I mean, those are incredible assets that we have and just waiting to be used.
I really know they look good.
Excellent. That's something to build on. Well, here's an example, actually, of a design that I did of a house on the left-hand side, quite a big house, could be a little apartment building for that matter, and how you could either design it that way as a residences or design the ground floor to be a shop. So, and there's more behind the facade, of course, as you're pointing out. Well, there's going to have to be fire separations and bathrooms and ADA, a ramp that makes its way, or in this case, going right in off of the ground floor. Different kinds of housing, townhouses. Townhouses are, you know, we need to see more townhouses. We call it the missing middle because we have a lot of development of single-family houses throughout America and we have a lot of development of apartment buildings at a certain level. But we don't have the sort of middle ground of row houses, townhouses, duplexes quite as frequently. So these are, up on the, the two at the top are row houses and townhouses that I designed for Bella Beach many years ago down the road. It's Fairview Village on the left-hand side. I'm not sure where the building is on the right, but it's a wonderful example of a duplex. Looks like just one big house until you look closer, you see there are two doors on the porch. These can fit very compatibly together with single-family houses. You don't have to keep these separated. They can, they can live together in the same neighborhood. This is, so let's travel housing right here in Lincoln City. They look quite nice. There's, the one on the right-hand side is wheelchair accessible for the elders. And it's a one-story house. There needs to be more of this also mixed into the neighborhood, the ability for folks in wheelchairs to get around and not have, be bothered with stairs. Now, another opportunity for affordable housing is in the back of somebody's bigger house. And what you're seeing in each of these situations are accessory dwelling units in detached garages off of a back alley. So this is on a lot that could be as shallow as even 100 feet, maybe as, getting down to 90 feet gets a little tight, but there's actually a separation between the main house in the front and the garage in the back. Now, you get a single-car garage, as in the upper-left-hand corner, detached with a beautiful little courtyard in between the house and the garage. Or as you're seeing here, to the right, is, upper right, is a carriage house with an apartment above, or quite a big apartment above the two-car garage in the bottom left. All of these, again, are detached from the main house and that's a really key point that a lot of builders and developers don't get into their understanding, that you don't have to have the garage stuck into the front of the house like this.
Lawrence? We just, within the last year, we passed an ordinance to accommodate the accessory housing.
Excellent. That's great. That's great, because a lot of jurisdictions don't have that. So that's, we would just roll that out into the new Nell Scott Gap neighborhoods. This is, this is what we tend to get. We've seen it all across America for the last sixty years, they've been building houses with garage doors in the front, turning their back end to the, to the street. These are houses that don't have any garages whatsoever, and they're smaller than the garage, or about the same size as what a garage might have been. It's cottage courtyard housing. These are, these are various ones that I've designed and have been, as you can see, built, where, there's one street in the middle that these houses are facing onto. It's a green in the middle, it's an active public space. That, that little fireplace here, you're seeing up here, wonderful little space that, in various ways, this one's a little bit bigger with incredibly small little cottages. There's a little loft up above here, and a one-bedroom on the ground floor. It's all of four-hundred-and-eighty-six square feet. These are a little bit bigger, two-bedroom, one-story houses. And then, so that it's not all the same house, there is a little repetition going on here, I bookended the two, at two ends, the two ends of that green, that are taller, two-bedroom houses, that do have carriage houses themselves off in the back, and you can see the alleyway back here. So you slip into this narrow little alleyway, you park on oyster shell gravel beds, and then the house faces out into the central green. Very affordable way of accommodating a lot of houses that have pretty good density. And that's the original design of one of those cottage courts. And these kinds of houses have been built and designed by, even manufactured way back in the 1920s, as the Aladdin, in 1917, Aladdin catalog had provided. Tiny little cottage that I found in Portland on the upper, bottom-left-hand. And actually, the upper-left-hand is called a Katrina Cottage, down in the southeast of the United States, has been designed after Katrina Hurricane. On the right-hand side here is actually a little apartment building made to look like a huge, you know, really big, single-family house. I show the neighborhood to the left that I've designed that was, that doesn't have that house in it, but you could see the big house in the foreground. It is a single-family house, but it just as well could be a duplex like this one on the right.
Back where you're showing that part of the concept, I think, was that Olivia Beach?
Or... This is up at Seabrook.
Right. But that concept is like the Olivia Beach...
Olivia Beach is very close to this, yeah.
So, when you're talking...
Well, the bigger house is Olivia than these.
Okay. And Bella Beach the same? Bella Beach is built differently.
Correct. Well, Bella Beach has a village green.
Okay.
Has, and on one side of that village green are these little, is kind of this concept on half of it, and there's a river on the other side.
And I guess the question was, we were talking about affordability, yet when I've gone down to Olivia Beach, the houses are anything but affordable.
Yes, and that's because they're rentals and they're on the ocean.
Okay.
And you pull away from the ocean, and the, but what I should also add to that is that there's varying levels of affordability in Olivia Beach, in Bella Beach, and in Seabrook. If you're right out on the ocean, or you have a view of the ocean, the prices jump up. If you're on the west side of 101, I would suspect that your prices, I haven't talked to a realtor about this, but my guess is that your prices are going to be higher than if you're on the east side. So I think that we have the opportunity on the east side in the gap to create more of that workforce housing neighborhoods, I should hope. And yeah, affordability is all relative. Yeah. And there's Olivia Beach. Yes, there's, you actually can't see the ocean from this green, so we put a green in the middle of it to sort of add value back in. It's a real amenity.
So if these houses were on the east side, they'd be, they wouldn't be four and five-hundred, they would be two to three-hundred or something?
I would, it's a totally different...
If we're really working hard at workforce housing.
Yeah.
And if something's four-hundred thousand, it's really not workforce housing.
Right. No, I'd agree. I'd agree that, you know, these kinds of houses, I would think further from the ocean on the, on the east side are going to be a different value point.
If I could just add to that, we've, what I think of hitting the price points that we know are necessary in Lincoln City, I feel like I'd like to talk with Deborah and look at our scope of work to really dive into that a little bit deeper when we get to the implementation stage, because as you look at various price points, there may have to be some, you know, changes in public intervention to help, whether it's fee waivers or expedited processes. So to really deliver products that are very, particularly very affordable, you know, there needs to be some public intervention. So it's probably detail that's a little bit beyond a typical transportation growth management project concept plan, but I'd like to just work with Deborah and see what, if we, how much we can get to in this study, and if not, what might a next step be in the context of affordable housing? Because you're right, we can draw, and Lawrence is very talented, can draw beautiful images and pictures, but what will it take to deliver those, that price point to market is really the question. So we want to make sure we get that before we leave our contract with you. At least some element of that.
And these are just other images of great old houses up and down the coast in various towns that sort of have been inspirations. Lively, vibrant, diverse communities, you know, that's, that's what we're speaking about. And yes, these are, these are, these are pretty upper-scale, upscale neighborhoods. This one particularly is Seabrook up on the Washington coast. But what's most important here is not necessarily, not only, not particularly the price point that we're reaching, but what should run across, what should be provided and available for people of all means. Basically, that the neighborhoods have various advantages for residents. Walking increases the opportunity and the strengthening of the bonds of the community. Services and activities that are in close walking distance, that's an issue of affordability. Different choices of housing at price points, and security of knowing your neighborhoods. And a lot of that security, and sense of security, and friendliness of a neighborhood has to do with the way the streets are designed, that the streets are not overly wide, which makes them overly expensive as well, that they were, they are narrower, that the sidewalks are separated from the driving lanes, and that there's on-street parking that slows the traffic down. But also, there's enough room to be able to, of course, let the fire trucks move, make their way through for emergency access, but that they're safe, convenient and attractive places. And finally, to head to Bay Trail connections, from Agnes Creek to Spyglass. We really hit the pavement today and verified with a group of, little group of people that walked up and down both sides of the highway, and verified that there are some great opportunities for connecting from Spyglass, from Agnes Creek down to Spyglass, and most likely using that stretch of highway from Twenty-Third, I believe it is, or...
Twenty-seventh, Twenty-third.
Twenty-seventh to Twenty-third, right in that section, there are probably two to three different opportunities for how trails could get down to the road. A pedestrian-activated crossing of a highway already exists in one place, but one or two other opportunities and locations for them. Then getting over to this concept of the boulevard function lane on the east side, and making its way all the way down up some stream corridors and into the Spyglass. And these are just images projecting what those kinds of trails could look like in some places. And then finally, the ocean and out to, and the wetlands that are in this environment. So again, getting back to active and passive connections to nature that we have around us. So, a summary of what we've heard, green spaces, parks, the Head-to-Bay Trail, these are things that we've been hearing from the citizens, from stakeholders, walking for all ages and for retirees, light industrial and employment opportunities for people to work here, range of moderate housing options. People have been asked, saying, "We need a grocery store to be close by where people live and work," that there are ways to get around by bicycle, not only by car. Transit also would be, you know, a great option. And that there are view car doors that are respected and kept open, bringing the arts into the neighborhoods and into the, into these mid-village centers. And then finally, how's this going to be funded, and what's the timing for all of this are big questions that people are asking and will be pursuing. So, we're open to questions and comments further?
That was an excellent presentation, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
We went from smaller places to the bigger homes, maybe some light industrial with homes over. I think the presentation is light in the industrial commercials picture. This is, we have an opportunity here for something a little heavier than just light industrial, and I'd like to see us do more in a way of, I don't know, researching what are the sort of businesses that could work in Lincoln City and would provide the most employment opportunities. You know, you mentioned manufacturing, something I was thinking of making bicycles or drones or kites. You know, you go down the street and you can buy a kite for a hundred and seventy-five dollars that I can get for twelve bucks out of China, you know, we could certainly make kites. So I'd just like to know more about the, a little bit of it, heavier than just very light industrial and retail.
I jumped up to speak to that because I do want to point out that Urban Renewal has just done a gap analysis, and it addresses some of your points. And also, the planning department is just getting going on our comprehensive plan update. Basically, it will be a new comprehensive plan. In fact, we have some workshops tomorrow to kick that off. But as part of that, we will be doing an economic opportunities analysis and a buildable lands assessment. So those are opportunities to look more in-depth at those questions city-wide. But I think, you know, your point is well-taken, and as we go through the week, we're going to be maybe getting a little bit deeper into the design and location of commercial and industrial in the Nell Scott area, right?
Yeah. Excellent.
Nice.
Yes.
Well, I'm curious about, about the art, and if you've thought about what that means. Is it going to be, I mean, because I'm, I have my own ideas, and some of you have heard them, but I can, I can visualize some type of artwork that pulls, pulls that whole area together, and I'm just curious what you have thought about.
Maybe you can tell us a little more about what you've thought about, because we haven't done, we did kids, this is such a strong theme this morning, we had a, pardon me, we had a group of schoolchildren in this morning that...
Oh, good.
Oh, boy, arts, entertainment, fun, learning, were so prevalent. And so we're really, I appreciate you bringing that up, and we would love to hear from you what you've thought about it, because really, what's the opportunity to make Nell Scott unique is developing something unique in that, in that regard. And I believe we're very open, so if you have thoughts, if you'd like to drop by tomorrow or share this with us right now, we're all ears.
Well, I could just tell you right now, just really quickly, that I don't, I'm not quite sure, but I can kind of see, stick with me here, a garden of windmills from small to large, an opportunity for kids to learn and build one of their own, and that they actually work and do something. Maybe they just make a light go on while they're, you know, while the wind, we have wind, we have a lot of wind here, and it would be good to use that in a way that would be creative. And the way that I picture are very beautiful or fun or whimsical, depending on how it goes, and it, they would be small and get larger just so, you know, you could, from either side. So I was curious how, how the housing and the light industrial and the, and then the other, and businesses would all kind of come together so I could see something that you could walk through and you could learn from, and people could design, and it would be a way to bring artists together and kids. We have a community school, we have a lot of opportunity. We have the, the high school students who could learn a little bit about how those are made and why they are and how they work, and it's a perfect educational opportunity, and it could be very beautiful and a lot of fun.
Well, if I could add to, add to that, I mean, yeah, I mean, we, we do think a great deal about how civic art in particular, that's one, a term, civic art, is part of, part of the public realm, part of making public places, again, that are, that are attractions and active places. And civic art can mean a number of different things. It can mean sculpture in a civic plaza or on a street, that the end of a street has an important commemorative monument of some kind, whether that is a fountain or literally a sculpture of a person, or a sculpture of a seal, as we have in Nell Scott sitting on the wall there, which I remember was just in his dream state back, when was it, a dozen years ago or so, when I, when I came to the first Nell Scott Urban Renewal show at, with Kurt Olson, that, you know, that was being discussed then, and there it is today. So making civic plazas and places that, you know, celebrating and giving ornament to places that are meant to be public gathering places might be one way also.
Please come see us tomorrow if you don't mind, because I'd like to talk to you a little bit more in detail about your idea, because when I hear about windmills, I think about advanced manufacturing and actually energy production, learning and employment, so.
Please come see us.
Yeah. Thank you about the community college, et cetera, so thank you. I think there's some other comments from the councils and commissioners.
I'm just thinking in terms of the industry, perhaps inviting outdoor recreational equipment manufacturers, it would be a natural for the area for kayaks or backpacks or boots for hiking or, or, what do you call it, synchro, you know, I mean, it's, it's a natural for our environment to have that kind of manufacturer here. And I also like your concept, I really like, I'm a walker, and I like being able to walk to a cornstole and make a bag of vegetables or some milk, or to the library, or to a theater, or to a restaurant. And I think encouraging development that keeps people out of their cars for as much as possible is a very positive thing.
Yeah.
I was, I was relating to what Deanna was saying. I spent a lot of time down in Portlay, and there's a riverwalk that goes up into the hillside, all the way from the beach, all the way up to the hillside, and it has shops and tents and some rooms all the way up. But after you cross the main road, the last hundred yards or so, is an art institute, and it follows the river right up into the hilltops and little shops, just almost like kiosks where people go and learn art forms, crafts and so forth. I love this thing. Mexico is a great place, it's a great place to study the use, land use, and for the housing options and mixed use options. Mazatlan has a place called Plaza de Chávez, that's a city block, and there's a road, I mean, roads, great square city block. The roads are closed except for rest of the morning for deliveries or emergency. Restaurants on every corner in the middle, housing above, warehousing behind, and then shops on the facing block. So it's a nine-square-block area with a plaza in the middle and shops all the way around, and then city all the way around, with more shops, and it's a smaller version that might fit well for this notion of light commercial under and a rural housing mode.
Yeah.
But the plaza idea is a place that fills, Mazatlan, it fills almost everything. And there's music in the streets, and chairs, and restaurants in the streets, and people dancing, and fountains in the middle of that.
I think we better go on a site visit.
I would love to.
Yeah. Sounds favorable, so if we, if we can, let's at least do some research on the internet. And it might, this might be actually a good transition. We have a scholar here and a practitioner who specializes in actually Latino use of space, so James Rojas is here with us to talk a little bit about what he's found in a variety of cultures, and also the fun and engaging methods that he's been looking at. Fascinating gentleman, I've had the opportunity to spend a couple days with him. So soon I'd like to transition to James and let him just give a little snapshot of what his work provides, and if you're able to join him tomorrow from three to five at the community center, or from six-thirty to eight-thirty, is that right? Six-thirty to eight PM tomorrow night, you really will get to play. We got to last night, I'm not sure, we'll have a chance this afternoon, but it's fun stuff. So any other comments or questions, please, Mr. Moore?
Just one quick one. You mentioned four or five slides back that you were designing streets...
You mentioned four or five slides back that you were designing streets, neighborhood streets to go 20 miles an hour. How do you do that?
Did we say 20?
I didn't say 20, but 20-
20 was on the screen.
On the screen. Did you say 20? I did write it there. Yeah, no, the model that we use is 20 is plenty. Now, not on your main street, not on your highway, not on, you know, not on a main avenue, but local streets.
The bumps don't work so well, they make a lot of noise.
Oh, those are awful, I can't stand those bumps, absolutely.
Put out talons.
What?
Talons, those are those metal spiky things you throw in the air.
Oh, yeah, that stops them.
There's a couple times I liked it, throwing that.
That makes it hard to even go 20. The best ways to slow down drivers on local streets is to, is to, one of the, combination of ways is to narrow the street. On-street parking is something that if you go too fast, you'll hit a car, so you don't go too fast. If the, if the road is nationwide and there's on-street parking, you can still speed right on through. And so, you know, common, commonly for the last 60 years, it's actually fire departments have required and it's been spread from one jurisdiction to the next, that, yeah, the local streets should be about 36 feet wide, 34 feet wide if you want to have on-street parking on two sides. And yet, there are fantastic streets throughout cities all across America, right in Portland, that are 24, 26, maybe 28 feet. The state, Oregon's Department of Transportation in Oregon has actually offered some, some examples of this and have, I think there's a website you can go to and look at all the jurisdictions throughout Oregon that have, what's called skinny streets. You have to be careful with this, absolutely, you have to make sure that you're not making it to the point that a fire truck can't get through, but a fire truck only needs really one lane to get through. Normally, what the fire, fire engine needs 20, they want 20 feet clear of space, not so much that they need to be able to drive through 20 feet, they can drive on a road on a 10-foot wide lane, it's to be, when they need to spread out, they stop in front of a house, they don't want to have parked cars right there, they want to be able to spread out and, and have their hoses move out, that they're not in something too tight. So we will, with a 20, let's say a 28-foot wide street with seven-foot parking lanes on both sides, that's still leaving 14 feet in the middle, it's not the full 20, but you also need to be within 150 feet maximum of the fire. So as long as there is a, an intersection or maybe where an alleyway comes out onto a street and it creates an open area where there can't be any on-street parking, you get that spread out 20-foot zone. So we plan these very carefully, how, how those work. The other great thing about, about neighborhoods like this is that we don't use cul-de-sacs, we really try to avoid those, so that there's always a circulation route. If you're stuck in a, in a street for some reason, if it's on a cul-de-sac, you've got one way in and out, but if you've got an alleyway around the back or a block that's real, fairly small, you can always get around another way. So that's probably the best way is to, is to keep the streets narrow and also more affordable that way. And street trees and keeping, you know, having this planting strip on the curb and then the sidewalk outside of that, street trees that are in the planting strip. If you have things that are close into the, the street, particularly in a rhythm like this, if you're driving fast, it makes you feel go, you can see that you're going fast when you're passing a lot of trees quickly, but if you're, it makes you slow down. If you've got lots of wide open space, you tend to speed.
I said one quick poll. So we don't have a port.
A port?
Port, no port here, no airport.
Oh, airport.
No airport, no.
Seaport.
Seaport, no rail. And we're not in the center of the country, but we're west coast, so the dynamics of, our, our industry is really going to be limited by that. What about our electronic industry, an electronic industry, Google, these, these types of guys, where we have affordable labor and relatively cheap land? Have you guys looked at that at all?
So as Deborah mentioned, really, we are sort of holding space for your economic opportunities analysis to refine what your cluster industries are likely to be. Opportunities analysis, economic opportunities analysis usually start with a community's own vision, goals and objectives, they're called community economic objectives, so you really hone in on what you aspire to, given your natural assets and your employment and workforce. This is certainly something we could mention, the computer and electronics industry, it is a major cluster for Oregon, so we could look at, what I'll do is I'll follow up with the community college and look at what businesses are demanding today, it's a very low-hanging fruit to do from an economic perspective, most community colleges in Oregon, including with their small business development centers, are responding to business needs, so I'll make sure to look into that and hear what's been desired so far, just as a, a cue to the economic opportunities analysis. So at the scale of Nelscott, we'll be able to allow for some things, but it really is something you want to look citywide, so I would be curious, we'll be looking into your gap analysis as well as what you mentioned today and then leaving space for the economic opportunities analysis. And honestly, once you do, an EOA as it's lovingly called, you may want to refine some of your other district plans, I mean, so that will lead into your entire comprehensive plan update, so it's quite a significant strategy to look at economic opportunities citywide. Please.
I was going to follow that, but I think what I'm going to do is change the subject and ask a question about earthquake and how, I mean, it's going to come at some point, we just don't know when.
That's right.
So is that, thank you.
Yeah.
So is that in your thinking too, when you're thinking about, you know, how this is actually going to be implemented and how, and how we can prepare for that?
Yes, yes, so we had an opportunity to prepare a tsunami preparedness guides for local governments funded by the LCD, so it's quite in my mind, I always know where high ground is and I recommend that everyone do. But walking, you know, so the, what we know now is that you cover in place and then walk to high ground rather than drive, so we're going to be very cognizant of building on your existing tsunami evacuation routes as a fundamental to the planning area.
And I get, I kind of got that when you were talking about where the zone is and that, but I specifically am concerned about earthquake because that's going to come first.
Yeah.
And we have an opportunity now for the city to actually have that in mind when, when the housing and the industrial and the other buildings will be, will be built.
Well, it's good Valerie, Greg Stevens, I think, from the Oregon Department of Transportation was showing me the slope and hazards map today, so I think that's already been in our economic, I mean, excuse me, our existing conditions report, but I'll make sure to look. So you're right, there's two major events, both the earthquake itself and then of course the tsunami, and then the third thing is the recovery, which is another reason why we'd love to build that redundant, positively redundant north-south route in case one-on-one is out of commission for, for weeks. Anything else to add on that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Right through the hills.
One of my favorite, one of my favorite subjects. Anything else, commissioners, if not, and counselors, we'll turn it over to Mr. Rojas for a few moments.
Do we still have you till five, is that, people have blocked?
Good afternoon, my name is James Rojas and I'm a city planner and when I went to MIT, I studied the way Latinos use public spaces in the American city because I'm Latino, my family lived in Los Angeles and it was a large Latino population there. And we had really unique cultural patterns, so one of them is that when Latinos come through the US, they'll buy a house and they'll turn their front yard into a plaza, because that's the most enduring space in Latin America. You know, they grew up in these plazas, they had their friends in these plazas, so they live in the front yard and think, what can I do with this front yard? So they'll put a fountain there, they'll put benches there, they'll put walkways, they'll put lights and become this plaza. So you have this culture just kind of reinventing a lot of these suburbs, you know, out in, you know, in California, other places with these plazas and murals and all these different things, they're really reminiscent of, you know, of Latin American cities. Most Latin American cities are based upon this, a lot of the Indians from Spanish, they built plazas. So that's kind of work I, I do is how to get Latinos to understand what they do, and this is all subconscious. There isn't no Home Depot book saying, "Fountain or plaza," it's just what they do, right? So sometimes I'll be lecturing to a group of students in college, Latino students, and I ask them, "How many of you have plazas in your front, how many of you, how many of you have a fountain in your front yard?" They raise their hand, right? And I ask them, "Well, why is it there?" "My dad has built it." We don't know, you know why it's there, he just built it when it's there. So this is all subconscious, so this is kind of leading to my work that I do now, where, you know, so for me, I look at the city as being, there's, there's two cities, there's a city, is that city in our, is the real city out there, or is that city in our head? You know, to kind of imagine the city, that's kind of shaping our experience, there's our children or where we vacation to and we kind of think about places that we imagine and how we imagine the future of our cities. So, so my work is kind of working as a planner, you know, working in Los Angeles, you can imagine all the horrible meetings I have to go to, the replanning, a lot of contentious people, always arguing and fighting and bickering, so how do we, how do we kind of get away from that? Think differently about cities. So I was actually, opened up an art gallery, started working with artists, and I was really amazed how we would have an art opening that would get 200 people there that are happy, you know, happy to want to be there, they're creative, they're feeling good about themselves. So I always thought, how can we as city planners be like art, be like curated artists and make people happy? You know, and make them feel good about themselves when they come to the city planning meeting. So I think one of the problems that, you know, we have as planners is that we go to school and we study how to read maps, numbers and words, but that's not the city people understand. You know, whenever I go to New York City with my mom, my mom can't read, my mom can't read satellite maps, so I gotta tell her, take the A train with the blue circle around there, make it, take it going north because that's where it's going, but she can't read a map. A lot of, a lot of public can't read maps. So a lot, so a lot of members come to our meetings as planners, they're lost. These planners love maps, we don't understand, people can't read maps. So for me, it's getting people to understand, you know, what's their language of a city, how do they experience place and how they, how they want, how they want to talk about it. So if you look back over here, there's a whole bunch of objects, so what I've been doing for the past couple, what I've been doing for the past couple, couple of years is having people play with objects and, and talk about, and kind of get their ideas about the city from the objects, because the objects are a way to get people to think about their physical connection to places, you know, and it's really easy for them to talk about a place by, through objects. It's, it's hard for us to articulate a street or a place, it's so complicated, but people can, people can easily build it and talk about it. This is really self-defining to a lot more people. Like today, for instance, we had a group of, we had six third graders in the gallery, you know, in our space today and they built their ideal city and talked about what they wanted, they wanted, you know, more activity, learning centers, you know, really great stuff, but the objects made it really quick and easy for them to kind of engage in this dialogue. And it also tapped their imaginations. It's another thing to creatively about the spaces and for us as planners, we're getting new constituents, we're also getting new information, because rather than have them write it down, they're just building, and when you play this way, you think a lot more, you think a lot more uncreative, creative ways. It's interesting because today we had a workshop with staff and, you know, you know, we had them build their, their favorite childhood memory first, just to get them to understand where they come from, what they value, because places are like people, because they, they kind of shape our lives, but unlike people, places don't talk back to us. We have no idea what we like that place, we just liked it. So how do, how do people think of, how do people reflect about how they like places, give us, make them think about why, it was a tree, it was a plant, it was a water, it was a sound, they start to articulate what they like, and as planners, we can start to understand what we need to put in cities and make people, make people want to use them. So today with the students, they did the same thing, they built their ideal cities, they had, one team had the circus city, just activities, we want to fund the city. The other city had a really bike path, they had a really interesting monument, educational center, we want to have this, we want to have a monument, we can read about it, something, and we want to have a school there. So thinking about how can, how can, how can the, you know, how can the environment teach us and teach us something by ourselves? And today we did a workshop with the staff and we had them build their favorite child, we had them build their ideal, you know, Nelscott, and it was interesting because for them, you know, there was no highway, there was no highway in their models, the highway didn't exist in, in their, in their plans. Mentally, there was no highway in this, in this community, you know, but there is a physical, but mentally people don't, don't think about it. So for, for us to understand, how do people think, how do people imagine their communities and how do you kind of translate that data into the future plans? Rather than focusing on this is what it is right now and we can't get away from that. So that was really, so I, I work in this kind of like this kind of imaginary space, but it's really important because that's kind of our, our drivers and that can, that can really reshape, you know, our seasonal feature. So that's, yeah, so this is one of the workshops, the material's back there, so we'll be doing these workshops tomorrow, I think at three and six, so I'd like to invite you guys to, invite you to attend.
Any questions or comments of James on engagement? He also has two lectures on that PowerPoint, "How to Build a Cultural Community." Oh, sorry. So any questions or comments of James or what we're doing here or what the purpose is? Deborah and Richard thought it was a high value, I'm very grateful that they were supportive of bringing James to town because even last night, the counselors who were here know that it was transformative, right? It was actually fun, I had a blast. No, thank you, please, sir.
Thinking about it and you mentioning fountains and plazas, on all three examples last night, none of us put in a fountain. I don't, I don't recall if we had any plazas, but I don't recall-
Did you have plazas?
Did we have a plaza?
We had one today, the other meeting, we had a time center with something and then people go to it.
We did have three, all, certainly a couple had a village green, you remember that?
Yeah.
You know, so the concept of gathering space and social, all three had the Christmas cottage, I must say. Any other questions, comments?
I'm interested in how you would translate a Mazatlan plaza into Pacific Northwest empire. How does that translate?
Well, you wouldn't translate it literally, but kind of work exceptionally, maybe it turns out to be a village green, maybe it turns out to be somewhere on the, on the ocean, just sort of, it's just some more people gather and somewhere that's really inclusive, very, very many to gather, because that's kind of the beauty of plazas and other ones is that everybody gathers there, children and adults. So having this kind of, kind of intergenerational spaces is probably really important, you have this kind of, you know, science theory, but how do you design it to be different, more of a technical question, but I think just having that kind of concept would be really important. And we see that today, somebody had a, you know, you enter, you know, this community with the arts way and then you go into this park, you go into this plaza area, this kind of center space, you know, and I think, because it's, because it's, it's town is very linear, you don't think about it being kind of, you know, around a plaza, so it's important to kind of think about it in a different way.
Can you mention your work in Eugene, with the Latino community?
Oh, yeah, Eugene, we do workshops down there, one of the professors, and they were really interested in parks, you know, how do you get Latinos to use, you know, parks and access parks? Coming from LA, there's tons of parks in Eugene, so I didn't think it was a problem, but when Latinos started doing the workshops, you know, parks were, were issued and we started figuring out why were parks issued when you have this really park-rich city? A lot of it was like the access of parks, you know, how the parks were designed, because there used to be, a lot of Latinos used to go into parks, it was a Mazatlan, it was a plaza in the middle and all these kind of, you know, social gathering spaces, and now you have all these trees and all, and not having, not having the kind of social spaces. So we started doing workshops here with the communities that have ESL classes, you know, you know, second language classes and have, we had the mothers and the kids working together building their ideal city, we went to, we built a little simple mall, we took it to the market, so people were buying groceries, we used to ask them, how did you reinvent, you know, how did you read the American Eugene? So we got a lot, a lot of really good, really great feedback from these kind of, these kind of practices and plus making everybody feel very comfortable, you know, with their, you know, with the situation and how to engage.
I think the farmer's market in Eugene is a good example of cross-cultural, cross-age aggregation of people enjoying themselves.
It's a good model, would you imagine something here perhaps?
Well, we, we have a farmer's market at the, at the cultural center and that certainly draws a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah.
Various ages.
Yeah, yeah.
Even an excessive amount, I think if this project could perhaps produce another kind of farmer's market plaza sort of deal at that end, I don't know, maybe draw a little away from, from the commercial center which is overly utilized during the summer, extremely crowded and very dangerous, I think, the traffic aspect of it. So it would be, it would be nice to have something at the other end of the world to share load. Farmer's Market is very popular in Oregon.
Yeah.
And that, that's true, they are, and Eugene has a terrific advantage in that they're surrounded by farms who can supply produce and we don't have, we have very few of those.
Well, you don't have fish here.
Craft.
Right, that's fine, yeah, yeah, but still gathering. Castle, work this.
In Seattle, was it Puck's Market?
Puck's Place, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's always surprising on 51st Street, we don't have a Puck's Market like that. People come to the coast for the real thing, you should have a guy doing fish and chips there and all sorts of fish all the way.
You should have a guy doing fish and chips there and all sorts of fish all the way along, pick up a bowl of fish and throwing it on there. That's something that attracts people.
And one thing I might add to that idea, which I think is wonderful, is some kind of canopy or something. Because not only do we get a lot of wind, we get a lot of rain, usually, this is a hot year, but, but it would still be nice to have that community type of thing to do, get fresh vegetables when they're in season and all that, even if it's raining.
You put a tin lid, lid on top, and that way you can hear the water bang on there. Nothing beats buying fish under a rainwater. It's all there.
We could find a heat lamp too.
Why not? It could be powered by a windmill.
We have had a concept, certainly a concept, concept coming up in our planning process about possibly food carts. So there's a, there's an idea of, we know there's strengths and weaknesses there for sure, and it's worth a lot of, you know, public consideration, but the idea of the entrepreneurial culture, you were mentioning the culinary school and where are good incubator spaces for small businesses, whether it's fish and chips or others. So that's something we're carrying along for future, for future consideration, just this concept of, those are frankly, you know, getting places and plazas too. James was telling me last night, I can't remember the community you were telling me about, maybe it was LA, about just vendors, and you were mentioning we're not surrounded by farms, but it doesn't always have to be food, but vendors selling different, you know, different types of spaces so that there's a low entry for entrepreneurialism. It's big up in the metro area, it's just people are just inventing things to do, and there's, you know, the job, no one's hiring anymore, people are inventing their own ways of making money. So how to encourage that entrepreneurial spirit?
Yeah, I hope the idea in LA that they took the old, even storefronts are vacant, you know, $3,000, $4,000 per foot, and they couldn't rent them out, but they did, but they did, they took the, the parking behind these storefronts and made it into a little pedestrian walkway. Then they put little tiny 10-by-10, still chaos, little cinder block chaos back there, and they rent them up. And now you have a host activity behind these, these stores that people are just, you know, having small businesses, you know, a smoke, a smoke, a smoke home shop, a glass, a glass shop, still tiny businesses, and the Latinos, they're there all day long, that's their business. So it's, you start, you start creating this kind of economic, innovative businesses. It's a really simple thing, you have art and crafts there and stuff like that too.
I think that could be a really good idea, but we have to be pretty careful with the design of that.
Certainly. What comes to mind specifically for you, if you don't mind, what should we keep in mind?
Well, I don't know, just some of, some of the photos that we've been looking at today, you know, just to keep things similar, have a factor. Because in Portland, it is a big deal, all of the, you know, carts, but it's a hodgepodge and it's not attractive and it's, and it can pull sometimes the wrong type of activity to the area and it's not always clean. But they've got real issues with, you know, like grease getting dumped down the store. I mean, there's a lot of consideration. It sounds nice, but there's a lot of consideration before we would want to do that.
Yeah, and you have a lot of great natural beauty here, so if you want to really preserve the natural beauty, just have it, not be touched.
It could be very attractive and it can be done well, yeah, there's, there's.
It would be good for entrepreneurship.
One of our challenges in Lincoln City is that we go from 150 miles an hour to zero in terms of commercial buying all summer long, we're jammed to ilks with opportunity. People come work, they can drive food carts and, and the rest of the season, which is maybe four or five months long, we are at zero. Even our, some of our biggest commercial restaurants close down for the whole season. Food carts would be stuck in a garage somewhere for that period of time. We really need opportunities for full months out of the year employment, opportunities and ways that we can keep our, I don't know, 2,500 indigit people off of streets and out of forests.
Yeah.
That's, that's really, I think, one of our biggest problems. And when we're talking about low-income or working class homes or what have you, we need to be talking about the guys that are sleeping, you know, six, family of six in a shack on a mattress.
You bet.
And surrounded by mobile walls paying $50 a month for rent. That's, I think, the biggest challenge Lincoln City has in our commercial area. We certainly got a lot of capacity for tourists.
Thank you, the fluctuation vote and then the very, you know, big cautions of the very moderate. Any other questions or comments? I would say if any councilors, if any councilors or commissioners are willing, we have the objects. So if you are willing, if you are willing, we might close the formal part of the agenda, but if you are willing, what James says is he puts out a sheet of paper and decides you, you know, building their ideal, you know, your ideal section of community, but we could really use to appreciate what you have in mind. And you don't, it doesn't have to be right angle forms, so. Deborah, would you like to say anything more before we close the formal part of the agenda?
Well, just once again, I'd like to say we are having James lead two workshops tomorrow, 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock at the community center, and starting again, the same thing, repeat for those people who can't make it before 5:00 o'clock, at 6:30 to 8:00. And he'll be using his hands-on techniques to draw out ideas about our upcoming comprehensive plan and our ideal community. So please join us then, and also, we have the Open Design Studios, the consultants will be there tomorrow, most of, 8:00 to 5:00, okay. So please come down for that. And one more thing is our public event on Saturday. So that will be a recap of, of everything we've been talking about, but particularly attention to the, the plans that the team is creating over this week, so.
Can we look to the website?
I think Roger mentioned it right at the beginning of the meeting, but we have nelskotplan.com website, we also have a Facebook page.
The survey's up now, so if people want to participate from home. Survey is, the survey is up now, so if you'd like to participate from home, the PowerPoint is up there, so folks can watch that PowerPoint again and answer a simple, simple set of questions. We'd love to hear from folks in the, in the room and at home. Chester.
Do you, Kirsten, do you have any of the sheets that you handed out last night regarding questions and suggestions?
I wonder if I have any comment forms on me. Do you have an extra stat back at the office? I have them down at the studio, but I'm not sure I have them right here, right here with me. James is looking, please.
Where, where is Saturday's?
Scott Plaza. So 10:30 to 1:30, right on the Nelskot Strip and Scott Plaza, gorgeous plaza. If it is too windy or chilly, we'll be back in the, in the studio space, in Mr. Rubin's space there on the strip. So thank you very much for your guidance. We'll proceed, but please let Deborah know if you have any other questions or concerns. And feel free to build a quick model with us if you wouldn't mind, okay? Thank you so much.